I will call this Township Council Agenda Meeting of May 3rd, 2022 to order at 7:00 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 22nd, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 28th, 2021, and the Newark Star Ledger on December 27th, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipani.net. Would you all join me in the flags loop?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Fred Carr, Mayor Jamie Barberio, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, and Township Clerk Collette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, May 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, regular meeting; June 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, Agenda Meeting. We will do the minutes at our regular meeting. Presentations and reports. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Start with the Eidih Fithar. How does come up? The count, can you say this?
Where's my guy? Where's the guy? I still remember. I need your.
Confirmation whereas Eidih Fithar is at a religious holiday celebrated by almost all of the gods throughout his life, Mark of Ramadan. And whereas Eidih Fithar is a turd after the last day of fasting and the day of rejoicing and happiness, especially for those persons fasting and reap the spiritual fruits of the holy occasion according to the word of God and the Holy Prayer. And whereas Muslims all over the world who dress in the appropriate holiday garb or attend prayer services, visit friends, relatives, or associates with a proper greeting of Eid Mubarak or blessed Eid are exchanged and turned on rewards in gifts and money given to their parents and relatives in addition to money and protection. Whereas the Council of Precipiny Troy Hills, which is for many Muslims who live and work in Precipiny Troy Hills, Morris County, who make us such a desirable, diverse, and great community, are very happy having Eidih Fithar. Now therefore, I, Jamie Joe Barbero, the Mayor of the Council of Precipiny Troy Hills, would hereby proclaim that wish is for all Muslims to be the norm Eidih Fithar Day of this third day of May, 2022. Thank you for having us every year. Thank you very much. Thank you. Councilor, shall we count all of them now? Your boss here and boss out there. Yeah. Roll down any of this again. Because Collette's got to be texting pictures. We're Relay for Life.
Okay, sure. Thank you very much.
It's all program. All is program.
Good night.
Yeah, not on my.
Are you coming down again?
Not like I have a choice, man.
After the speech.
Thank you. Who am I arguing?
All right, this is Relay for Life. I'll speak a little more because you know my history as well. Whereas cancer is a group of diseases caused by uncontrolled growth and spread by normal cells which cannot control and result in premature death. And whereas Relay for Life is a signature event of the American Cancer Society whose mission is to raise funds to improve cancer survival, disease, and decrease incidence of cancer and improve the quality of life that cancer faces in caregiving. And whereas at Relay for Life events, communities in the United States across the world come together to raise funds to help make a difference in the fight against cancer. And whereas the Morris County area residents will be joining formerly impeached people in over 5,000 communities throughout the United States and organizing Relay for Life events to celebrate cancer survivors and remember loved ones who are no longer with us and to help and raise funds to make a difference in the fight against cancer. Together, we will find a cure. Day is this third day of May, 2022. Now, I can tell you, apparently you're a cancer survivor. But I come, and I will tell you, I come from when I was a young boy, my brother passed away of a brain tumor when he was 10 years old. I was nine. I lived there in Precipiny. And I will tell you, Precipiny, the community of Precipiny is wonderful. I will all came together, all of them together. These school came together and, you know, supported my mother and my father and my sisters and myself. So, that being said, as, you know, the many cancer survivors here in Precipiny, as a president, a hero, as well as a cancer survivor as well. And, you know, this means a great deal to me. I remember when I first became a mayor in 2000, and I didn't want anything to do with it, because it just pulled back two of these bad memories. I don't know if they convinced me to give it up. So, that being said, apparently, I want to thank you, all the hard work, you know, you're doing this, you know, you keep it running.
I'm too busy.
And then, yeah, it's a tough thing to do. So, that being said, I want the whole Township Council to come down and take it.
Now you tell us.
And the husband, right?
Yes, my husband.
And Adam is a cancer survivor, so Adam wants a happy round, as you know, good man.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're going to Council President, all right?
And we'll be working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, man. And this will work. And just I have one last thing, Council President, for a report. I will be setting up a meeting next week to meet with the Finance Committee. I have the budget. And I'm going to go with the Finance Committee, and then after we go up to the Finance Committee, we can go over to set up meetings to discuss.
I anticipate maybe give the Council a week to look it over themselves.
That's fine.
Before we schedule review meetings, we need to determine if anyone asks questions that would require a department head to be there, or maybe we don't need any department heads.
All right.
So give them a chance to look at it first.
Okay.
Everybody bring your calendars. Next week, we'll set up some dates. Any reports from Township Council?
None at this time.
Township Attorney?
No report at this time.
Thank you. And as Administrator?
Sir, I have nothing.
Township Clerk?
No report at this time, Council President.
Thank you.
Any Township Officers' Committee reports? And any correspondents? Okay, no news is good news. Bids taken, 4/7/22, supplying pumps, motors, generators, HVAC units, boilers, water heaters, water storage tanks, and parts prepared for parish departments. Item 2, 4/13/22, lease of public property. Item B to be taken, 5/18/22, fabrication and installation of new wood shutters at the Smith Baldwin House. Where are you looking?
5/12/22. Nobody has that one? Okay.
I have a 5/18/22.
I have a 5/12.
There wasn't a... So there was a additional bids, RFP, taken, and an update of the agenda after the one that was provided to Council. It's the supply of manic polymer for the wastewater treatment plant. One set of specs for had been picked up so far.
Okay. I pulled my agenda out on time, and apparently that wasn't on time.
I believe I could take that up with the clerk.
Let's have some hot water here, man, hot water.
Okay. Also to be taken, 5/18/22, fabrication and installation of new wood shutters at the Smith Baldwin House. 5/19/22, well redevelopment services, wells 3, 10, 4, and 4A, and pumping system replacements for wells 3, 10, 4, and 4A. Third item, 5/20/22, Veil Water Tank Painting and Rehabilitation. I believe that's inside and outside, right, Mayor? The Veil Water Tank?
I'm sorry, I'm supposed to read this out. Interior and exterior of the tank, repair of the concrete foundation, tears, ladders, platform, guardrails, and tank parts.
Interior and exterior. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to open this meeting to the public.
Make a motion.
Second. What you mean, Mr. Karifi? Seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call. Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
The floor is open to the public on any matter. Before we start, I've just been informed that there is a black...
That's on. It's running.
The car is running, so.
Did we take a roll call?
We did take a roll call, and the floor is open to the public on any matter at this point. Make if you'd like.
Uh, Nick Homiak, like that a lot. Uh, I was wondering if the Township of...
All right, hold on, Nick. All right? There you go. If the Township of Precipiny did reprimand in any way the contractor that was throwing the debris all over, and it's... I noticed they weren't only doing it here, they were doing all over, but I really think that there should be some kind of reaction because it's just inappropriate. The last time I was here, Mayor Barbero, you were saying you wanted to get more police. Now, if we're doing okay with the police that we have, and there's not a crime wave or anything, but I would say if you're going to invest any money in a municipal police force, and if you look at your ordinances, sanitation ordinances, it says it will be enforced by the police. Now, if we only have one sanitation officer, I would think that we might as well not have any sanitation officer. I guess it's a cosmetic because it has to be. The government says you have to have one. But if there isn't any enforcement, or to code of conduct, he doesn't want to take it to another step. He's depending on education. So I guess we need a doctorate degree in sanitation or something to... It doesn't make any sense, but we're starting to have these wind events. I mean, the wind has always been there. We're having these wind events now, and with the material, the plastic material, this stuff is all over the place, and most of it doesn't get police backed up. It's there, and then it sneaks off into the environment, into the rivers and surrounds it. It doesn't have to make it to the ocean. It's a... You go down Troy Meadows on that cleanup, and you go where Troy Meadows comes into the Meadows, you'll be stuck for hours in one spot, just picking styrofoam and plastic. And it's all from stormwater runoff from improper sanitation practices and the wind. And if we look at our ordinances, I mean, it's only paper, but they're weak. The ordinances are weak by the elements. The people these days, a lot of people even know what the elements are, the sun, the rain, you know, the sun and the moon, one of them will be back soon. I mean, you know, it's... I really don't think people even know the difference between organic and inorganic matter anymore. But if you're going to invest money in a police force, and sanitation is a police duty, in fact, years ago in America, police were the garbage men, or they didn't enforce it. But get at least another sanitation officer, this town's pretty big, and start enforcing the rules. You could start off with warnings, but other towns, I know for a fact, if you don't manage your garbage correctly. The other question I had, and I wanted to know, how much did the town pay overall in tipping fees? And the other question I have is how are the tipping fees distributed? Do, like, do you just take the bill and you split it between all the homeowners? And I'd just like to know how that bill is paid by each individual. So in other words, if you have good practices, but somebody else doesn't, or he puts out a ton of garbage two days a week, and you have a minimum amount, so you're being dragged down because other people are not, you know, caring? Go to No Road. And I mentioned this before several times over the years. You look at those dumpsters along No Road, you don't see any enclosures. So when the wind comes, or they don't put it in there right, it gets all over the place. So...
Thirty seconds.
All right, I'll leave it at that, but I think that the... If you're going to give it more police attention, and it's the greatest ongoing offense, the police say it's not a crime, but if you get out there and you go a couple of... Believe me, it's reached the level of a crime. So consider more sanitation officers that would be more diligent in their job and enforcement, and eventually, I think you'll be respected for it more, and the people eventually are going to have to wise up. So I'll leave it at that. So, Happy May Day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Terri Baird. I live at 180 Precipiny Road in the Whippany section of Hanover Township, and I just wanted to thank everybody for your wonderful humane animal control that you have. The residents of Hanover Township are very, very happy with our shared services agreement with our town in reference to our animal control. We find that they are very responsive. They are very good at outreach and being very proactive, especially when it comes to our community cat population in our town. While most of them have been TNR, there are always instances of ones that have to be, you know, caught at a later time or have recently been dumped by people or something like that, and they've been very, very good with all of that, and we are very, very happy with them. I enjoyed our meeting that we had on February 14th, and I do believe you mentioned Mayor Barberio about us meeting again, and I look forward to meeting again and speaking about how there's, you know, volunteers such as myself that could assist Precipiny with your community cat population like I have in the past and have been doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have any questions for me, be welcome to take them.
No, I will actually, I will set that meeting up within the next two weeks because I, you know, with regards to our... The ordinance that we have in place right now, you know, I'm going to make some recommendations to hopefully work it all out where it can work out for, you know, everybody involved. But I have... I've been... I've made myself very clear on several matters with regards to neighborhoods, and I don't want those neighborhoods to be affected by our ordinance. So with that being said, I'm only being candid and upfront. With that being said, I think we do a great job. I think our animal control does a very good job as well, so... But it has to be revisited because we can't have incidences like we're having right now in just one area. And I don't know if there's any other areas. I hear there are in the Lower Lake High Wathas section and Chesapeake where the population's getting out of control. So we have to find a way to maintain it and control it.
And that's where people such as myself come in, because, I mean, it's my dime, my time. It doesn't cost your town anything for me to come in and volunteer for numerous amounts of hours on a weekly basis to trap for, you know, six, seven, eight hours at a time, which... And that's with no break and no 15-minute break and no lunch break. I want to tell you, lucky you get a bathroom break. And, you know, I'll do that on a weekly basis, and that's how I was able to do, along with my friend Gail, do the Noel Garden Apartment Complex. And since we have done that, which was two years ago, which started July 7th in 2020, right at the very beginning of the pandemic, through education of the people that are there, through making friends there who are, you know, basically boots on the ground, and going there weekly, every Tuesday night I was there, we were able to eradicate the population there, and it has dramatically declined. And also, what happens is that the ones that are there, that are remaining, are holding that place, and they are healthy. So any cats that are unhealthy or injured or whatever, we go in and we take care of, offer medical care, or, you know, sometimes, unfortunate thing is that, you know, it's injured too much and it would have to be euthanized.
Well, I just guess what I would like to say, too, is I didn't appreciate in the past, my last term, and everybody was calling me a cat killer because we didn't have a trap noon and release program, which is very frustrating because that's the last thing I am, and I love all animals. In fact, I have my own animals. But when we get to disagreements, what I don't like is when people take it to the next level and accuse you of being something that you're not. And that, and 1718, I kept reading about it. The fact of the matter is, I'm not a cat. I don't like killing animals. We never did, and I didn't like getting marked with that, because if somebody doesn't agree with you, they always go to the next level and they try to ridicule you. So you might not agree with me going forward on our trap noon and release program, but the fact of the matter is, I don't do it, or I don't have an opinion on something. I do it for the public safety of our residents. That's what I do everything for. And if I do get marked as a... That again, I'm not going to take kind to it. I'm not going to... I'm going to be very candid. I'm not gonna... The last time when those accusations were made, it was very upsetting and very frustrating. So with that being said, I'm looking forward to having that meeting again with everybody involved.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the meeting also, and I would like it to be on the record that I was never a part of any of whatever you're talking about.
And I don't think you are. So I don't think you are, but I'm just saying.
I'm from the next town over, you know?
I'm just saying, I'm not the same guy from four years ago.
No, I just happened to have been called in in 2020 to assist your animal control because I'm so good at what I did in Hanover Township. I'm not going to tap myself on the back, but, I mean, I basically did my whole town myself. So I, like, don't really have much to do in my town, so for me to help other towns, I am more than willing and able to, you know, and like I said, it's my dime, my time, you know?
And I look forward to working with you.
With all my own traps and all my own equipment and everything, so, and I do all the holdings, so, okay? Thank you very much. I look forward to meeting.
Same here. And thank you for your service. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Or is opposed? Ordinance 2022-08?
Ordinance 2022-08, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 4 entitled Police Department of the Township Code to create a new Section 4-28-1 entitled Appointments to Department Qualification. The notice for ordinance 2022-08 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, on April 11th, 2022, and introduced at the April 5th, 2022 Agenda Meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2022-08 be heard in their second and final reading by total only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022-08 by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022-08 by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2022-08 by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
The floor is open on this ordinance only?
If you don't mind me asking, can it be explained? The... All I heard was police. I'm sorry, I didn't check it out, but can it be explained to the public for the record?
It allows the appointing authority to waive the civil service exam for entry-level police officers, so they have to meet every other requirement. They just don't have to sit for the civil service exam. It can be waived.
So college education and all that stuff, or...
Well, the same, all the other requirements that we have still apply. It's just that they don't have to... That you can waive the civil service exam. And the problem is, it's getting tougher and tougher to hire police officers. You know, it used to be a couple of years ago, you might get 100 applications. Now, it's just tough to find them. So they have to comply with everything else that the town requires, but you can waive the civil service exam for entry-level.
And are they doing this to increase the ranks?
Well, I think it's just a good idea to...
It's statewide.
Yeah.
Oh, it is statewide? All right, okay, thank you.
Sure. Seeing no one else?
Entertainer motion to close?
And thank you for your service. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion. Second. Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Ordinance twenty-two oh eight?
Ordinance twenty-two oh eight, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter Four entitled Police Department of the Township Code to create a new Section four dash twenty-eight dash one entitled Appointments to Department Qualification. The notice for ordinance twenty-two oh eight was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, on April 11th, 2022, and introduced at the April 5th, 2022 Agenda Meeting. Motion to accept ordinance twenty-two dash oh eight be heard in their second and final reading by total only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty-two oh eight by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
The floor is open on this ordinance only?
If you don't mind me asking, can it be explained? The, all I heard was police... I'm sorry, I didn't check it out, but can it be explained to the public for the record?
It allows the appointing authority to waive the civil service exam for entry-level police officers, so they have to meet every other requirement, they just don't have to sit for the civil service exam. It can be waived.
So college education and all that stuff, or...
The same, all the other requirements that we have still apply, it's just that they don't have to, that you can waive the civil service exam. And the problem is, it's getting tougher and tougher to hire police officers. You know, it used to be, a couple of years ago, you might get a hundred applications. Now, it's just tough to find them. So they have to comply with everything else that the town requires, but you can waive the civil service exam for entry level.
And are they doing this to increase the ranks?
Well, I think it's just a good idea to...
It's statewide.
Yeah.
Oh, it is statewide. All right, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Seeing no one else?
Entertain a motion to close?
Second. Make a motion. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by...
Oh, well.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title only on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance twenty-two oh eight by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance twenty-two colon zero nine, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter Four Administration of Government of the Township Code to create Section four dash six four dot one entitled Conflict of Interest. The notice for ordinance twenty-two colon zero nine was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, on April the 11th, 2022, and introduced at the April 5th, 2022 Agenda Meeting. Motion to accept the ordinance twenty-two colon zero nine be heard in their second and final reading by title only and by myself.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearing. Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty-two colon zero nine by myself.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only?
See no one come forward, motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-two colon zero nine by myself.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title only on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above by ordinance four ordinance twenty-two colon zero nine by myself.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-two colon ten, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter Four Administration of Government of the Township Code to create Section four dash sixty-four point two entitled Anti-Nepotism Policy. The notice for ordinance twenty-two colon ten was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, on April 11th, 2022, and introduced at the April 5th, 2022 Agenda Meeting. Motion to accept ordinance two thousand twenty-two colon ten be heard in the second and final reading by title only. Motion made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion open the public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only?
Need a second? Second. Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Musella, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only?
Just a brief question, this and the other ordinance, aren't there already established ordinances and laws already in place for conflict of interest and nepotism? So why is it coming up again?
It's because in order to enact the first ordinance that the Township Council did with regard to waiving the civil service, these are requirements of it. So you have to have the conflict of interest policy, which incorporates the local government ethics law, which you're absolutely right, we're all bound by that anyway. And then the second one is the anti-nepotism is also a requirement. So if you're gonna do the ordinance waiving the civil service exam for entry-level police officers, you have to enact these two as well. So yes, there are laws on the books that would already affect that, but these are two additional requirements that the council's required to enact.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
See no one else, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title only on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance two thousand twenty-two colon ten by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, now we go to consent agenda. Item number four?
Yes, can I make a motion to remove item number four and vote it, and vote on separately by myself?
Second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Just for the record, the motion is for Resolution Number Four authorizing the assignment of the Stormwater Management and Development Agreement to Park Builders 102 LLC. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, just for clarification, that was a motion to remove it?
No, it was, it was a motion to remove it from the consent agenda and to vote on it separately, yes.
So now we need to vote on it separately?
No, well, it was two motions, we could say, we could say a compound, it was a compound motion.
All right, it's a combined motion, all right. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, approval of payroll list?
CFO Juan Uribe recommends authorization for payment. Authorized payment of the five twelve twenty-two regular payroll estimated at 1.65 million. Payment of bills from voucher list of five one twenty-two through five three twenty-two, estimate totaling 1,012,338 dollars and nine cents. Motion to approve the authorization for payment above made by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Musella, that was seconded by Mr. Karifi?
Uh, Mr. Neglia.
Okay, Mr. Neglia. So motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?[1733.64]